So we're ready to start the continued public hearing on Mont Bel Road. There were two things that I remember, lighting fixtures and landscaping. Betsy, have you gotten revised lighting fixture cuts?
Um, no.
All right.
I have actually worked on that quite a bit.
Okay.
Do you want to bring us?
Yes, please come up.
Can I put this in? Can we start from the landscaping because I feel a little bit more ahead. So, yes, we sent a landscaping plan to Kim or to Betsy and she submitted to Kim. It came back with suggestions, so I incorporated all the suggestions.
See your email right here from six twenty-two.
Yes, so I incorporated the suggestions because there are things that we've done before in our previous house, so we're very familiar with these particular plans. We haven't done those things because we're still waiting to see if this house is good for us because, you know, the first year we've been there, two years, there's a lot of problems and that's where we're asking for this extension. So, but it's something we've done with before.
Okay.
So we've sent the revised, hopefully Kim will tell us if, but we did exactly what she was asking for.
Right.
Okay. And that was in that recent email that she sent?
Yes, she sent it one today, right?
Yes.
And I made the projection.
Okay.
Well, again, didn't work.
Yeah. It basically is, Kim said that most of the perennials were sort of low and she wanted a little bit higher ones.
I actually, yes, I meant higher. I didn't even think you would put the high because the low bush blueberry is really a wild blueberry. It's very, it's very, very low. So this is, I did graduate school in Switzerland, it's full of this type and you will collect them. No, we had the tallest one.
The tallest, yeah, so she already said that you're familiar with that, your previous property in Connecticut.
Yes.
We changed all the proposed bushes to blueberries. And they changed their hosta to high bush blueberry and then they moved the three-seaters, already moved them to the field.
Yes.
And then you did see their plan, right?
Yes.
You have a plan, you sent the plan.
I sent the PDFs where you could all the need.
Yes, so we are looking at that.
I didn't think of bringing a computer actually, but.
We have our little ones here. Yeah. So mostly you're creating islands to break up that big expand of the front yard, which is what we asked you to do.
Yes, we're creating two big dogwood in the middle of the front lawn and that's the one that I had hostas put under them because this is a completely shaded area. So we've tried to plant various things. There is already an existing island there because there's a big oak tree.
Yeah.
Under that oak tree, we have planted several things and they all died because they actually never see the sun even in the summer. So that's why I designed with hostas because I know hostas do survive happily. But then Kim would rather have something more of a barrier, so we can put the blueberry. Blueberry grow very well in this area.
Yeah, and they don't get eaten quite as badly as your hostas, which would be mowed down.
Yes, they do get eaten, they don't know, the hostas die in winter, so they, you know, the deer don't come and eat them. But azaleas get eaten terribly, the rodents don't know. And the blueberry lose their leaves in winter, so they're not eaten either.
Some bad winters delete the root of them.
They do?
Yes.
Because we have so many azaleas.
Some of ours, some of ours, they've eaten them, some they haven't. So I mean, they've stripped, they've stripped at the front.
No, you know why? I think because we have a lot of azaleas on the front and we have in the old house, we like their color, and I think they probably like their taste more. We found a black net we could put over them, but.
It's a tugboat.
No, I just, you cannot see it at all.
Really?
Yeah, it works really well.
We do it for tomato plants also. So.
Good, okay.
So look at the revised, I sent the revised.
And so light fixtures?
Light fixtures. So after we were discussing last time, I actually, so I was trying to find on the website the exact recommendation of the board. So maybe they are somewhere, but I couldn't find them. So what I did is I went to the, and I found the society, the dark side, you know there's a dark sky society? Actually, they have a wonderful website, so it's a very, very informative website and also has a lot of articles which are medical, which would be our field. So this is very good for us, like we can understand those well. So they also have practical guides. So I printed just a couple of things from their practical, I have something called the residential lighting and then another very comprehensive, but from this I only printed a couple because it's like a pack. So I looked at what they recommend. So that was very reassuring because I looked at our fixtures. So what they recommend is to be covered, partly covered or completely covered depending on where they are. So actually all the, oh, first of all, they recommend all of them to be CFL, CFL lights. So I printed it because.
Contact fluorescent?
These ones, this time. So actually all of ours are this way anyway. We had changed the whole house inside and outside to this, just from our personal interest. So they recommend this and they recommend to have some covered except, and have a number of exceptions. So all the entrances are accepted. So I brought this, I printed it out. The entrance is the front entrance, the back entrance, and one extra light, which doesn't apply to us because we don't have that extra light to be. Now, they don't ban floodlights as far as they are either pointing down and they don't point more than ninety degree angle from, so.
From the fixtures.
And they have a good picture. So this is like, so they don't want floodlights that look like this. So and they talk here about, so this is one of their guides, this is the residential, this is the more comprehensive one. So I looked at all of those things and I went one by one, all of our lights. So our floodlight points down and CFL light, actually they recommend to put the more expensive CFL lights that are not sensitive to cold, so they switch on really fast. We don't have those, so ours, if we were to use them, it would be very, very low. So I have all of this. I looked at one of, so lumens also, like what you were asking for. So we, that one we've discussed last time, we're way below the lumens. So we have CFL light, we are below the lumens, our floodlight looks down. And I also print for the new, for the addition, I printed every, you know, the kind of lighting they recommend and we're going to get that for the addition. So I just printed some from Amazon, although I don't think we're going to go to Amazon usually, we'd rather have something a little bit more local. So for the addition, for the existing one, we are very well covered by their recommendation, but we would like to know, you know, if you go by this or if you're using a different society. I mean, if there is a different society.
Well, we, go ahead David, this is your.
Well, we haven't, I mean, this is what's inspired us, I would say.
Yes.
We haven't said we go by their ethics standards, rules, all that, and adopted that, and the town has not specifically adopted that. But our, but in our case, what we've looked at and what we've required historically is the dark sky initiative.
Yes.
You know, and there have been a couple of times where there's been some exception, but for the most part, it's been put the light where you want it, down low.
Yes, yes.
And not have it so that it's not shining up.
Yeah.
Or shining out.
Or shining out, yes.
And that the, if there's a filament, that that burn is not what you see when you're driving by or walking by.
So if you have, when you have the CFL lights, you actually don't have a filament.
Right.
It works in a different way.
Right.
So all of ours are CFL anyway, and actually that was already in the original plan of the architect, but I didn't pay attention, I just went and I looked at all of our lamps and I realized, oh, that's what they mean CFL, yes.
I don't remember that, I thought the candelabra bulbs were incandescent ones.
Come and see them.
No, they're all, they're all.
But you can come and look at them.
There were two that were CFL unless you've changed them since the site was.
No.
No, we've changed them.
Are they small, small ones?
Candelabra bulbs.
Small candelabra bulbs or CFL?
They're regular ones.
Right, there were two that were regular and there were clusters of three candelabra bulbs and I think two of the different fixtures was my reference.
Candelabra bulbs are shaped like a.
Yeah, like a flame.
Right, exactly.
You went around and checked.
Did I miss one? I don't remember what you're saying. Is it in the front entrance?
Yeah, I think it was.
A porch.
So the front entrance, according to them, it's even not even, I mean, if you look at our sort of land here, for example, because they have a skin to be able to explain, these kind of lights are even excluded from any of their cover, they say.
They're not excluded from our.
Yes, but it's under a roof, you know, we have a front, our front entrance have a big, you know, part of roof and, you know, when you're talking about dark sky, you know, there's also the simple laws of physics, like if you have lights travel straight.
David said it's down, yeah, down. That's what we're concerned.
Down and all, I mean, it's under that part of the roof.
Right, so I understand. The roof keeps it down, but it doesn't keep it from shining.
Yeah, but do you have the cut sheets for those candelabras?
Yeah.
Do you have the lumens?
Pictures of the candelabras?
Yes, let me look. So at least I missed that one that you're saying. And I looked around the garage, the side entrance, did I miss that one?
So one is.
Yeah, maybe this one that you're talking about.
Yeah, these are the problems with the lights, which is that.
So if I missed that one, which I didn't make, I can change it to CFL too.
Well, it's not about the bulb because five years from now, somebody could come in and say, I want to put the candelabras back. It's about the fixture.
Yes, but, so.
But all these.
So that one, for example, which has the fluorescent, could be replaced with an incandescent later.
But, you know, on the same time, you would also say that someone can come.
Yes, that's the whole point.
No, but on the same time, you can say that someone can come and say, I don't like this dark sky, I'll take them off and put another one, you know, this is not an.
So we don't have any way of really keeping people from doing it.
That's a lot more work than changing a bulb.
It's a condition.
Right. Everything is all terrible.
When it was all incandescent, we could restrict the light.
Yeah, and actually this is something we wanted to understand.
We could still restrict the lumens, but the point is you could put any bulb in there.
Well, the point is the bulb is like shielded.
Yes.
When we talked dark sky, we talked shielding and watching, right? And that's what we like and that they're shielded down, so you don't get that when you're walking up, you don't get that glare.
We don't have that glare actually, I remember you mentioned last time, so I, we really want to educate ourselves. So this society actually does define glare as something, you know, the kind of reflection which is uncomfortable to the eyes. I mean, we invite you to come and look at our place and if it isn't comfortable to your eyes, we can discuss again, but we're so far from being uncomfortable to the eye. And we also want to make sure that we do things that are logical. I mean, you know, anybody can go on and do an expense which is exorbitant for everything.
I seem to remember the last time, one of the things was you're concerned was a very dark area anyway, you were concerned that you want a little more light in strategic places, so.
So in the, I said when the new addition, our plan is, there is no reason to choose something else. I mean, if this is the recommendation, we'll put the dark sky. But really for any, like a society which is trying to give good recommendation and under a roof, I just don't.
The existing lights are not, like I wouldn't define them as glare, that it would be something that would catch your eyes, you're driving by or distracted. They're really, they are very low.
But again, this is something you can test. You can come on a night.
And in relation to changing them out, like, you know, you'd have to police the whole Western that, you know, someone can come in and say, I've put in a CFL light and three days later they can change it, like unless you lock.
We understand.
Unless you lock the.
We're trying to cut down the odds.
We try to cut down the odds, exactly.
But by talking about the fixture and not the bulb.
Yes, but.
That's why we're talking about.
So anything which is new, we can do.
No, I heard that, but we're talking about what's there.
Some of the ones that are there, you were talking before about covering, you could put over.
And put it, put the color, which, you know, dye in the top of them. But by dyeing the top of them, we're looking at the dark sky, we're looking at what their issue is, that's not to put light up in the sky. But for those particular lamp that we're discussing, this lamp is under a roof, I mean.
No, I understand that, so that takes care of going up into the night sky, you know.
Well, if we paint the front of the lamp, then the lamp won't have anywhere to shine.
Shut down.
These are lamps which are like this a little bit, so.
And what's on the bottom, are these on a.
It's a.
No, they're hanging.
It goes down somewhere.
Most of them are hanging.
Fixtures.
Yeah, it's open on the bottom. So that's from where you changed.
I think the idea was to bathe the light so that it would do what it was intended to do, which is more or less allow light to spill over where it needed to be, so where the steps were, for example.
Yes, we don't really use that, this is the front entrance, we don't use it much, but yes.
So I guess what we're just talking about is.
The garage one doesn't, yes, it's one single.
The area that will be, you know, toward the top, which is where the filament will be, the burn, the hot burn, you know, that that's the part that we were, we would, you know, like.
No, no, I saw, I was sure this in the shielded ones.
Yeah.
All I'm saying, this is an expense you're asking us to do, which.
Yes, it is.
Well, again, if.
It's not a huge expense.
If you're doing that with the.
This is not true actually, because things do adapt and, and we, you know, we're trying here to understand what's a justification and I understand the logic and I read, I mean, I just put a reading.
Well, that's understand that the dark sky compliant is sort of our national standard for cities, but they're really trying to cut down. And in Weston, we're also trying to cut down, we're trying to keep the lumens exactly directed as to the spot that they need to be, so that when you have a spotlight in the back, you might have it, you know, with a fluorescent fixture, but it needs to be shielded, it needs to be so you have a very direct.
Yeah, ours is actually, it actually only points down, so.
So it's the shielding, you see, that we're really concerned about.
Yes.
It's the shielding and the down.
Shielding from butters, not just from the sky.
Right, because we're not a city where really, you know, that's part of the reason you hear is it's really kind of lovely and rural.
So I don't think we're far away from each other at all.
Yeah, and a couple of light fixtures is not a lot.
Where's the spotlight?
It's on the back.
It's.
Yeah.
Take a last thought of it, right? Yeah, I see it. What is it?
I think you went around the back and had a wall back there.
Is it two lights like this or is it one, a single light that?
No, it's two lights like this.
Okay.
And did they have a cover over them, the shields there?
They are completely covered like this, I mean, they're like half a bulb, half a ball, each one of them, with a light on the side.
Oh, okay, so it really is a shield.
This is a shield.
Well, yes, but my question is, is it, is it adjust, usually floodlights are adjustable, so that you can point them down or point them out.
Yes, so ours is pointed down.
Point it down, but can you, can you rotate it?
We don't normally allow floodlights, that's absolutely a very, very good point.
You can, if you take a big ladder, you can rotate it, but this can be true for any light, so.
So five years from now, when you're not there, or ten or fifteen.
So what many lumens are we talking about?
Then you'll have to discuss with a new person.
How many lumens are we talking about total?
Twelve thousand currently, fifteen thousand with.
We're well under.
Yeah, I was being generous to even talk about a shielded floodlight.
We don't allow floodlights.
We don't normally allow.
We don't.
I mean, would you have.
If you don't allow floodlights, even if they point down.
They're pointing down now, but.
No, but, no, this, I'm sorry, this is an argument hard to think, because something like this, for example, which is dark side association, whatever, this also you could point at.
But by that reasoning, I could, I could put in a, you know, a light that you like and then, you know, a year later I could put in a huge floodlight and you wouldn't.
You could do that and somebody might notice it and then you, we'd be right back here having this discussion again. What, 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 this is not about, you know.
But there's a point where I say you either believe our integrity.
And you're arguing about, you know, how many light fixtures are we talking about? Half a dozen at the most?
In total, around the whole house?
Well, no, the addition.
Oh, the addition is.
The addition is one or two.
It's two.
How many in the existing house? How many we're talking about?
Six.
Six.
And not all of them are an issue, right?
Well, I'm afraid not anymore because now it's, it's extremely, but you really have a.
The fixtures in the ceiling are not, how many are on the wall?
You have six.
Six, no.
How many do you want in?
The flood, how many floodlots?
The existing lights, how many are on the wall?
Six, I'm saying six. There are two in the front door, there are two on the garage, and there are two on the back door on the, on the.
So you're not including the cans in the.
No, without.
Okay, so six. So say that each one of them, if you bought six brand new lights and a couple hundred dollars apiece, three hundred dollars apiece.
Okay.
Compared with the cost of the addition is not an onerous additional cost. That's the point.
It depends on what is, you know, a cost for everybody is a different thing. And sadly, this is part of our requirement.
Can I just say?
Where are the, where are your titles?
Are they law?
There's not, this is a policy that we followed for the last.
Where is the policy written over?
Is it like someone has voted for this policy, like Weston has voted or?
No, it's not a bylaw, this is the planning board's review standard. There's no bylaw that says you have to plant high bush blueberries.
Well, you can, it's documented in all our previous decisions, but houses are over certain, specified, we're allowed to ask for certain things.
And the thing is, you're coming in front of us not for the addition, but because the addition puts your entire house over six thousand square feet, which means that we have to.
Not six thousand, we would love to, but.
Wait. Over the ten percent.
Right.
Which means that we have to review your house like any other house we've reviewed that's over six thousand square feet or.
Not six thousand.
Or ten percent, or over ten percent.
The RGFA.
Yeah, over the RGFA percentage and therefore we're reviewing the entire property, the existing house, the addition, everything, we're not just reviewing the addition, everything has to comply. It's no different as if you were coming to us with a brand new house.
It's, you, listen.
It's not a negotiation.
It's not really a negotiation, this is what we're going to require in our conditions. And so.
And, yes.
You can sit here for the, for the next forty-five minutes and try to change our minds, but we're not, you're not going to change our minds, so.
Because we have to be consistent with everyone.
Exactly.
Is it logical though that someone come and look at the lights at night too? Because that's the issue.
Because you know, in our domain, which is the medical domain, okay, what we're discussing here is if, for example, I have a broken leg, someone comes to the hospital and the ER doctor says, oh, look, I really feel for you, I understand you have a problem.
We, our next hearing is scheduled, would you like to continue this hearing until next month?
I want also to have very precise, you know, you know, you're saying it's a, it's a decision you take, but we couldn't actually find exact.
What day would you continue to?
Are you okay with the covering that we proposed last time of actually painting them over, so they're actually, they are covered?
Well, we said we were fine with that last time. Yes.
If that, if you're fine with.
As we said, I, you know, that's why I'm surprised.
Well, we weren't sure that you said that, so.
Well, I don't think we, we had any fixture cuts for the addition last time, there was some, something was missing, I forget what it was.
I went back and looked at the notes and the issue was, the three issues were landscaping, which they've addressed, the lighting, which we didn't have the cuts for the.
Addition.
For the addition.
Right.
And then the survey because the.
Yes, do we have the survey?
No.
We don't.
No, we have done that.
We actually, we spoke with the survey and he said it was actually correct, so.
It is correct.
Yeah, so.
So we'll bring the paper over.
That's correct for the existing additions.
Yeah, so we actually blew, blew up the.
Okay, so we have the lighting fixtures for the addition, we have the, we have the conditions for the existing fixtures.
Do you have the lighting fixtures for the addition?
Or no, we're putting down.
You want, when you say you have the lighting fixture means bought or?
No, I mean, I, no, I want to say.
Yeah, one of those, I mean, I, one of the ones that were, you know, from the dark sky society.
No. Those exact fixtures are you proposing that's for?
They'll be, they'll be those, because it's just, it's just the.
It's under, it's under this.
Yeah.
So, okay, so then how many?
Nothing on the wall?
No.
So the new fixture is going to be?
Well, we, we just have that extra one, that's just being moved to the side, isn't it?
What?
So it would be, so that's the proposed garage extension there. So we would have, this one would be moving there and we would have one under, one of these under the, under the, that is when here, so just there, so they're there.
And then what's the other, the other one is? What about the can light?
Is this one here?
They're relocating an existing fixture.
Okay.
If you're gonna buy that fixture.
Yeah, no, it's, it's what we buy, it doesn't make sense to us, okay, in other words, cause if you can ask.
So now we have five existing fixtures. I just don't, I don't think that the condition is, is at all onerous. What you were talking about the last time, that, we said that would be acceptable, that's still acceptable.
Okay, so we're just painting them over.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and so the survey plan is actually active?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we?
Can I ask another thing? The other thing that the same dark society, as we said, for pointing light down is to use the LED kind of lights, which are actually completely protected on the side and only shine underneath here. Is that an acceptable thing for you?
It's the bulb.
And we're trying to.
Yeah, oh, it's the bulb.
We're talking about fixtures.
Yeah.
So are we ready, are you ready to draft the decision? Or are we still missing something?
Yeah, I think we're ready to draft the decision, but we don't have any time on December third, so it's gonna have to be December seventeenth at eight a.m.
Okay.
Okay.
What we'll do is, Betsy will draft a decision that will discuss everything we've talked about. We'll review the draft decision at that meeting and vote on it and that's, and then we're out of your hair.
But what I want to ask you that we discussed last time, I want to confirm with you. So as I told you before, inviting or getting a person to do these changes now, it's much more expensive than if we do them, and I think one of you suggested that we do all those changes while the electrician is there for the addition.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's absolutely.
So that's fine, we can get them all together so at least they match.
It's not by the time you get the occupancy permit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Do it now.
Probably different time, you do it all at the same time.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Did you buy this house directly from the builder? Was this brand new and then the first people?
Yes, yes.
May I ask who the builder was?
Kane.
Roger. Who was the builder?
Roger.
Kane built it.
All right, do you realize what happened here? In order to stay underneath ten percent of the lot, he put on a garage that's a joke. It isn't a garage at all.
It doesn't work.
I think you can put a baby carriage in there. And so they have to come before us now.
Yeah, that's what has killed us.
And do this addition and have to deal with the added expense. If he had come to us initially, over ten percent of the lot, the landscaping would have been done, the lighting would have been, everything, you know, would have been fine.
He doesn't got enough margin. No, but it's not even this, it's like, I think they made a mistake on where they placed the stairs that go inside the house. This is what, that you can fit two cars, the problem is the one car, unless you have a tiny car.
It's like a dollhouse, it's a dollhouse garage.
I bet you're, you're exactly right.
And this builder made sure that the great anonymous owners, unfortunately yourselves, have to deal with us. And I do apologize for that, but there's nothing we can do about it, we're the same standard.
And we are so energy conscious, I mean, it's very hard to find more energy conscious than us, like we change all of our bulbs, we use, you know, we drive an energy efficient car. We're very conscious for energy, but, so that's why we're targeting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you sort of walked into the buzz song.
But you're very right, you're very correct.
You know, it's just ridiculous that this is happening.
You know, I think, he's probably not the only builder that.
Oh, no, absolutely not. You're in good company.
We have a Mazda CFX five, which uses very, I mean, I don't really live in Cambridge, so I'm gonna choose the Mazda.
Can I just, your discussion about the, keeping the meeting minutes before, there are a lot of services that you can actually send.
Yeah.
The recording?
The recordings and they just do it.
But the trouble with that is they don't know who's talking here.
Yes.
But they have a video, weren't they? So.
But see, but see, the problem is, it takes, it takes longer, I mean, you're looking at four hours of video and I haven't done them, I haven't done minutes from video, but what I've been told is that it takes longer. Because.
And then you have to be busy, you have people.
I mean, I take minutes kind of for me, so that for decisions and stuff, but, and I certainly could do the official minutes, but.
There's also programs like Dragon, which.
But Dragon doesn't differentiate between the people.
Well, that depends if someone actually, if you can get Dragon to recognize and someone corrects it, it does cut the time, so.
But we also don't want every word recorded, we're not talking about.
Oh, I know, sorry.
We're talking about interpretation, summarizing.
Potentially you have a four hour, five hour meeting, we try to. Potentially, you have a four-hour, five-hour meeting, that we try to condense to four, four pages a minute, which has stayed long.
But we appreciate your, your suggestions.
No, it's, but, you know, if you have people from different, you know, expertise, it's a good, it's a good comment.
They're gonna get a copy of their home client, and they don't necessarily have to be here for that meeting, it's just for us to read it and get that approval, but you'll have a copy ahead of time. So, you know, you check it, and if there's any issues, check in with Betsy or me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks for, I appreciate your comments.
And I, I'm pretty impressed with the amount of research you did on it.
We must, I mean, we think about a few ish from work.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.